Just wanted to say thank you to our entire staff and team for helping to, to build the budget and to bring this presentation to you this evening. So we'd like to start with highlighting the strategic goals that council has set forth, the main strategic goals for covering public safety, economic development, infrastructure, and expanding parks programs and services. So as we look at the strategic goals, I will be meeting with the, all of the departments to really align our five-year forecast to these strategic goals to ensure that the funding that we bring to you for adoption is not sustainable, but it's a long-term plan focused on meeting the goals and to ensure that our measurements are including successful implementation of those. So your overall budget contains revenue assumptions for about 13% on sales tax. It also includes about a 13% for your M and O and general fund property tax at this point. General fund fund balance right now is maintaining that target of a 35%, while our finance policy does maintain a 25% fund balance. So our debt position and our bond rating, city maintains a very strong double A plus credit rating. This will help tremendously as we go to market to continue to issue the, the second tranche of the November 20 bond election, as well as the additional tax-supported debt that was approved in the notice of intent last month.
And just a, just a review for a second. It's basically impossible for a city of our size to get a higher bond rating than we have, but we could lower it if we have too much expenditure or if our tax revenues drop significantly below projections. Is that right?
Yes. Mood and report and from our credit rating last year indicated some of the, the can, not concerns, but areas to focus, and that would be to maintain a positive correlation between your debt issuance and your growth in operating revenues. So as long as we maintain a strong coverage ratio, then not only will maintain, we will be able to maintain a strong credit rating. So we have a projected debt service for FY '23 of 18.7 million. The tax rate impact to, due to the debt issuance is well below what the voters approved in our bond election. Current outstanding principal is 333 million. So the current budget is assuming that we adopt voters approval tax rate. This includes 3.5% increase to your M and O to allow us to invest in our community and continuing to provide those core services and quality of life that we have aligned with our strategic initiatives. So last year's adopted tax rate did not include a three and a half percent increase to our M and O. It was actually a decrease of point two, point 0234% on our M and O tax rate. So without investing in, in setting a tax rate to generate those property tax revenues, as we continue to invest in infrastructure, invest in our capital plan without reducing that, we're continuing to spend money. So if we don't set a tax rate that allows us to generate revenues from property tax, we will end up increasing your property tax rate as we continue to spend money because we would have to issue debt. So if we don't have cash to diffuse, to diffuse the amount of debt, we pass on that cost of capital by issuing additional debt through interest rates on that debt.
If we do that, that creates a, a self-feeding spiral, right? So in the long run, we're just moving deeper and deeper in debt if we're, if we don't make those changes in tax policy that you're, you're laying out for us.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
So the first budget that we'd like to review is the city's component unit for our Flugerville Community Development Corporation. As we look at their budget, their headcount remains flat year over year. Their personnel does increase about 4% compared to their amended budget, and their operating expenses increased about 30%. Their capital outlay increase is about 72% or 3.2 million. This does include $6 million land purchase, line of payments, and investment into the, the ongoing payments for Impact Way. Debt service reflected there is for their loan, for their water park.
Is the increase in operating related to projects or some other operating?
Yes, it is.
Amy's here.
We have.
You come forward, please.
In operating, we have approximately $71,000 in incentives. So that includes that along with our normal grants that we do for community engagement as well as workforce development. And so the majority of that is obviously with those incentives as well. Did you want to add anything, Solon?
Please come forward, Luke, speaking to the microphone.
Included also in the operating expenditure increase is an investment into the strategic plant, Seds 2.0, which is expiring this year. So put away resources amounting to $200,000.
Already three years into that, Seds 2.0, time to do it again.
All right. Thank you.
Please move to an overview of the general fund total budget request. So our FY '22 amended budget includes 365.5 full-time equivalents, including your, your part-time. The FY '23 proposed budget includes an additional 26.5 new positions. Your overall personnel operating, personnel costs include a $5.1 million increase, and I'll break that down to, for you on the following slides. Your operating increases reflect a $1.8 million increase. And your capital outlay has increased about 2.3 million. So we look at some of the details, I'm breaking down some of those increases. For your, your general fund personnel increases, that $5 million breaks down to $2 million for adding 26.5 new full-time equivalents, increase to compensation of about 2.5. This increases, this includes merit increase, cost of living adjustment, an increase to your police department's step plan for your sworn officers, and some promotions and reclassifications.
Are the 26.5 spread throughout all departments, or is there one, any one department that is a little higher than others?
Multiple departments have an additional.
It's not heavy in one, I don't think at all.
And we had talked in the budget cycle last year about making sure that we were doing things to multiply the effectiveness of our top-level personnel, that we had top-level personnel doing essentially clerical tasks, and that we weren't bringing in enough people to, to adequately support them in the last budget cycle. Is that addressed in the, in these current personnel requests?
No, not really. And we've had that conversation quite a bit. I would love to get there. My major issue is I have zero places to put a person. When I use the word zero, sometimes I'm dramatic, but I am not being dramatic when I say we have got to hire people to do the, the jobs. So this was much more focused on to do the actual, I, we could probably find a slide that has the list, but, but nonetheless, it's people to do the work. It's parks, it's engineering, it's, it's a mix of that. I've physically looked at each facility and I have directors sharing offices. Until we can get a handle of space, I couldn't add clerical staff. I would love to. I just, remote clerical doesn't work very well. So what, I think next year, I mean, luckily, y'all know how fast a year goes by, and, and I, we're going to need that, that staff support. Everybody just kind of does their own, their own stuff, their own calendaring, their own everything.
Could we put everybody on a 40-hour, work a straight, 40 hours and rotate in another person?
Yep, just do that, actually clone everybody and, no. So, so we've struggled around how to get that support, and right now, I think what the staff asked for was people to do the work.
I had a question. I wanted to know how you calculated the cost of living increase?
It was a percent, go ahead.
So I'm going to come back to y'all next week and ask for a COLA increase next week. We're watching other cities do these mid-years. I'm going to ask for a 5%. The current CPI in the area is around 9%, so it's not even meeting what we know are inflation adjustments today, but we can't do that at one time. Our neighboring, our largest suburb to the south of us made a goal for that their lowest paid per hour would be $22 an hour. That's a goal. Let me be very clear, the article talked about, and I've talked to staff there, it doesn't mean they're just pulling the trigger tomorrow, they're going to try to get there. Let me give you an example. Our lowest paid hourly employee, full-time employee makes $15.12. If we do a 5% increase, that brings them to 15, 8, 7, when I've got Austin going to 22 in three years. So then what I would like to do, that, that 2.5 compensation along with, because it correlates with the benefit side of it, I'm going to ask y'all to do a 3%, which is our merit that is typically every year, and a 5% in October. That reaches us, so that same employee at 15, 12 will now make $16.14. If you go to Buc-E's right now for $16, you can be a cashier. You can work at In-N-Out for $16 and others. If we want high-quality people, I've got to pay it. So that's what we're asking to do, is to give those employees 5% next week, you know, next week, and then a 3 and a 5 in October. That's my request. And that still doesn't bring us to what I would call is mid-market. Our competition is fierce.
I had a quick question about projections. I noticed we're looking at fiscal year '22, you know, we projected less than what we actually needed. Our, and looking at fiscal year '23, are we lowballing ourselves?
On which, which?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the general fund. Am I looking at that?
On operations or personnel?
Just the whole thing overall. I mean, I guess it would be personnel and operations, I mean, both of those actually.
Sure, I'll talk briefly to personnel. Really, that 580 is going to represent salary savings. I'm sorry, wait, you're on PCDC.
No, I'm not at the general fund.
I'm general, I'm sorry, personnel, we come in at 27, I'm sorry, 27. I'm going to attribute that 2-point-something to, is that a rough math, 3 million, to salary savings. I think that's mostly what it is, is that we budget the positions. I'm sitting on probably a 20-something percent turnover, around 20%. National average is around 50% or something. So what that reflects is, is salary savings. So then we budget back up again, knowing that we probably won't. Now, we don't budget positions for the full year starting in October. Those 25, 30, how many is it, 30 positions, those 30 positions, some we budget to start in January, and some we start to budget in June. So that, that's that increase, and also that's increase in compensation and benefits. So are we lowballing it? I don't think so.
I just wanted to make, I know it's hard, you're looking into this proverbial crystal ball and trying to figure out where we're going to be this time next year, and we don't know, but, you know, you want to make sure that we're not asking too little in the beginning, and you're going to have to come back to us later on.
I'm going to hope that we don't do that.
So in the, well, you had general fund personnel increases. This doesn't take into account the police department?
Yes, it does. So what we are proposing with them, and I'm happy, I, I have not made that public to the police department yet, so I didn't want to bring the numbers totally, but we compared to seven or eight other cities and got them to what I believe is, is market. Those increases are reflected in here.
Can you explain capital outlay to me?
So capital outlay items are typically, and heavy equipment, items that cost maybe over $100,000 for like items to go in a building. They're, they're large one-time purchases.
Could you give us an example of '23, that increase?
Sure, we have a slide for capital outlay.
There's all of our capital outlay increases.
That's total.
Total, excuse me.
Yeah, so, so the other slides do represent increases, capital outlay or one-time purchases. So from year to year, they can be very different. So this year, our, our capital outlay, we're looking at some equipment for parks and some items. It says buildings, it's an accounting classification. We're really looking at things to put in our parks that aren't heavy machinery, right? So there's things that fit under the capital outlay. In library, we have an out, a capital outlay item every year to fund replenishment and new additions to books, periodicals, any of those kind of items that are in the library. We have some investment in same equipment and stuff in the cause. Under public works, we have some items under facilities, within streets and fleet, within development services, and we have some software within development services, administrative services, and then some items under public safety.
So let's, let's talk about the parks equipment. We're looking at 987, but obviously we're, we're talking about mowing equipment. What other kind of equipment are we talking about to make up that, that number?
And also, I think we didn't hit this before. Let me, let me go there. We have a lot of this detail, and I'm happy to answer that question. Before we go into the, the nuts and bolts of it, I wanted to say, we do owe y'all in six weeks the actual budget. So I will tell you, my numbers are not perfect tonight. And we have, we probably have the capital outlay, but if we want to get into real meats and potatoes, I'm not quite there yet on, on some of it. So I want to preface that with, you will have that in on August 1st, if not before, but we can do some of that tonight.
Yeah. I just was looking over your shoulder and I saw we got our parks guy here, so I thought he could give us a good example.
So a good portion of that, in, every time you put a playground in our park system, it's got a lifespan. We have, have had a bad habit of going past the lifespan, so we have 15 years on our playground equipment. I've got 14 pieces of our playground equipment right now that are 15 years or older. And so we have made a commitment to replace to a year. Y'all have been great in supporting that through the capital improvement process. This takes it out of CIP into capital outlay and allows me to know that every year I'm going to have $425,000 to replace shade, to replace two playgrounds, and to update any signage. So it's just one of those standard across that we're continuing to replace two to three playgrounds a year. So that's 425,000 of that. Then there's a backhoe and there's other equipment pieces in there as well.
Okay. And as we get more and more parks, that number will go up over time?
Yeah, the great thing about the capital outlay is it allows us to bank it as well. So we don't, don't have to expend it all, and if, if one year we only need to replace one or two playgrounds, and we're able to do it in a discounted way, there could be savings that for the next year, we're able to, to catch three or to beef up the two.
And the idea here is we should get on a regular cadence where maybe we only need one year. How many different parks do we have that have this equipment with a lifespan right now?
We have, we have 33 parks, 29 playgrounds currently.
So right now, we're at, to do 15-year lifespan on each, we're at?
Yeah, we're seven, yeah, we're seven.
So as we get more, eventually we'll be at three a year.
Yes, it would change the year.
But we'll, we'll get on a cadence so we don't have to front.
I've got a, I've got a folder that shows in 2036, and I don't believe I'll be here by then. We're replacing the playground we put in just this year.
But we're trying to catch up to what we've done in the past. So are we going to need to do three playgrounds in the, in the next few years to catch up?
We will need to do two to three playgrounds, at least 300,000 of that 425,000, probably need to be at playground replacement, playground improvement for the next seven years. And then after that, that might start to die down a little.
Have we decommissioned the little small pocket parks or still, or do we have very many of those left?
We still have pocket parks. Sometimes pocket parks come to us through development. You know, a development comes in and they give us a small pocket park of space. We work with a maintenance agreement where they're maintaining that, so we take the maintenance off the tax roll, but any hard structures that are in place, whether it's a pavilion, a restroom, a playground, are ours. So ultimately, we start to immediately plan to replace.
But I'm talking about a pocket park where, I mean, I've seen a couple of them where there's just two pieces of equipment out and in.
They're still ours, yeah. They're still, they're still the city's, and we're still immediately tracking its replacement as soon as it goes into the ground. So we do have, you know, even if a pocket park comes in, it's just a, a gaga pit and a, and a bench, for example, we're going to have to replace that at some point. That's going to turn out, and so we're, we're tracking all of those amenities.
Well, I guess what I'm.
Some of those might be a shorter lifespan.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you know, evaluate those parks. I mean, if, if nobody's using them, we don't need to be replacing the equipment.
I'm curious, the, some of the outdoor fitness equipment along the trails, I imagine we track that, but hopefully that's a lot.
Yeah, and we've got a new outdoor piece coming in this summer as well, PCDC.
This also includes pools, correct?
Yeah, and the master plan's doing a great job of tracking that as well, and we'll have a, we'll have a working document with their recommendation by the end of the year.
Thank you, sir.
And just to add, the, the investment to the parks does support one of the key for strategic initiatives.
So I'm curious, going, going back a little bit, the personnel costs, do those include healthcare? And how much do we expect our healthcare bill to be going up this year?
So the, the total cost for healthcare has increased about 28% for claims. The amount that of funding year over year. Sorry.
Is that 28% year over year?
Yes, for paying for claims, though. So when we look at the total amount that the city needs to fund, that has increased. The amount that has been funded in this budget has not incrementally gone up that much because of how we spread the funding. So at the end, the amount of funding is meeting the needs to, to pay the bill, right? I think that the, the, the way the claims are being paid and those estimates, and we've been able to revise our forecasts and do a better job and more accurately accounting for the, those funding needs.
Are we seeing that the, the personnel costs, I'm going to call it the incidentals, the benefits are outpacing our, our wage increases, or are they staying pretty close together? Reason I ask that, per capita, the cost of our personnel seems to be increasing dramatically, and I'm trying to see if that is directly related to, you know, higher, higher-paid positions, additional raises, cost of living increases, or if it's related to the benefits that go along with, that we have to fund along with the personnel.
Separate on that slide. If you want to go back to that slide, thank you.
So this is the breakdown, I'm not sure if this is exactly answering your question.
We're showing them separately. Does that help? Even though in our, we use the word compensation typically includes benefits, for the purpose of the, the budget, we just wanted to show compensation meaning salary.
Correct.
Okay, so our, our benefits are increasing at a higher rate than our compensation?
I'd have to do the math. I don't, you mean?
Yeah.
It, that seems interesting. I, I need to work the math on it. What are you getting at? I'm trying to.
Trying to make sense of it.
So the benefits, like, have increased by X per, because I don't have the first number to know what the percent change is.
Fine, what I'm, what I'm seeing, if I did the math right, and I'm over here doing math on Back in Athens, is that our personnel cost per capita is increasing about 9%.
We're obviously not giving everyone a 9% raise.
So where, where is that falling out? It's, it's, or maybe we are, I don't know.
James, why don't you join us at the table permanently?
I think Robbie probably has a better grip on this, too. So, so based on this current year's utilization, which has been fairly high, our broker is anticipating a 28% increase in our premiums next year. But to your point, is it outpacing the rate? So like, so say we're, we're giving employees an increase in their comp, in their salaries, but are they paying more in health insurance? Is that kind of?
Well, I think we're paying more in health.
We are, we're absorbing that. So then that's a policy decision. We could pass that on to the employee, and we're asking not to.
And kind of the, we, so Hub is our insurance broker, and we had them kind of do, they manage hundreds of cities, and we kind of said, what are you seeing? Are you seeing cities absorb it or pass it on? Almost all of them are absorbing it, because they're, everybody's trying to say competitive, right? They don't want to take from one and put it in the other, so.
Do the staff feel that the health benefits are satisfactory?
So we also read exit interviews, and we ask specific questions like that, like, how were your benefits, health, vision? And we, we're very specific. I read a lot of those exit interviews. I never see that as an issue, so I'll say that. I've heard the anecdotal stories of great stories with our, our benefits. We have consistently, over the past few years, decreased the cost for the employee for their dependent healthcare, and that really is from utilizing a new broker that showed us different ways to do things. So we added, for example, a couple of years ago, a different plan. So for example, I'm on a high deductible plan, and that's cheaper for the city. So we were able to just maneuver and do cafeteria-style planning for health insurance. Do I believe our employees are ever perfectly thrilled with health insurance? No. Do I think that we're highly competitive on health insurance? Yes.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, that 28%, that's a, we have not ever seen, that I'm aware of in this city, seen a 28% increase on health.
And I think our, our expectation is typically that the, the final bid comes in under that, doesn't it?
Yes, and, and also because the, the years aren't aligned, right, with health insurance, that we're guessing. So normally, I don't know what we originally guessed at, but it's usually 10%. So this was, this was tough. We had some, we had some hits, we had some high claims, and so it's real hard to predict cancer and other high claim items.
Just a thought, it's like, since we've basically come out of a pandemic era, so to speak, you would think with as many people working from home and not going to work, not having accidents, I mean, obviously, people get sick for a number of reasons, but it seemed to me like the experience rate would have been going down instead of going up.
So we do look at, and we definitely cannot see who the individuals are, but I take a look at your top 10 payout claims, for example. Surprisingly, maybe to some people, it's, it's having twins. It's, it's not necessarily sickness that we think of. Those are not as expensive as, and then it's going to be the cancer. It's heart attacks, cancer, heart, and, and babies. Those are, those are our high claims.
That could have been contributed by the pandemic.
Duly noted, duly noted. We skipped a slide, so, yep, there you go.
So we, so we look at year over year, the total increases to our operating expenses, and we've had some increases, and we also have it offset by some decreases. So the main increases have, come from parks at 1.8 million, and planning and development services at 600,000, and our engineering department at 300,000. Again, there are some.
They, they look a little young to be engineers.
A little bit. We're training them young. We create that pipeline, right? We did see some offsets and decreases from our streets department as, well, the streets department was the, the primary reduction, and moving roadway rehabilitation projects over to our capital.
I'm just kind of making a general observation, it seems like 330,000 for engineering is low, but what, what is included in that?
The majority of that is for staff augmentation, for that increase, it's people.
So I know we've had this conversation about not being able to get engineers, no matter what we're, we're paying them, and the strain that that's putting on our engineering department, that they've got more projects than they can do with the people that they've got. What, what can we do to address that?
We can approve what we've asked for. All of those questions have been, I mean, that is something that, you know, James gave me analogy today, and I can't get it out of my head, was that if you give $100 to a person in the desert and tell them to buy water, they still can't do it, right? So we have to give the right resources in the right place. And, and what y'all did a few weeks ago was that mid-year, and that greatly helped engineering. So you may not be seeing it here, but remember two weeks ago, the increase on engine, that was heavy on engineering a couple of weeks ago. So really also the competitive nature of also even getting these people. I believe that we have the right number of people to carry out the jobs based on this. I do.
We're going to have enough engineers to do all the projects that we've got.
If we can fill those positions, I've got a CIP position that's new out, that's a CIP director position, really need that one filled. I've got that on the street, should be interviewing soon. Then we added quite a few other positions. So right now, it's hiring and getting the right, the right $100 bills in the desert is, is what we're doing. I, I feel comfortable, if it's not working, it would be augmentation, but that's augmentation.
What about the support staff in engineering? We've talked about that, and I know that the support staff is very low in the. I, we've talked about that, and I know that the support staff is very low in that, in that department.
Um, so I, I don't want to name, um, I want to drive y'all out there one day and show you where we have people in closets. It's, it's a major space issue at Public Works, too. I'm just, we're not there to ask for the support staff yet, um.
Can I, can I ask to that point, do we need some capital outlay for, um, portable buildings to, to help with that?
Um, possibly, so, um, we're also doing the Public Works Master Plan, um, by the water plant, which will alleviate, alleviate those. Portables are an idea, and I'll talk to the Facility Subcommittee and see if there's something we can do. But I wasn't willing yet to add support staff when we need the actual engineering.
And one of, I just want to make sure we got what we need.
I'm, I'm, clear. Clear.
Like, well.
Okay.
We, we'll never have everything we need, yeah.
We're, right, but we.
But we gotta, we gotta keep track of it.
The, the voters have approved all these bonds, and they want us to do all these projects.
Well, there's also software issues that we're asking for in here, because a lot of that efficiency model isn't necessarily support staff, it's efficiency through their ability to do project management with the right software. So we're asking for a set of it software, I would say if I had to choose, I'm going after the software.
And the, and the C I P person.
Yes, and the C I P director, and all those positions you already approved, and the positions that you'll approve in this one, and the augmentation, I'm good.
All right.
So we've been seeing that the capital outlay, these are, and the total purchases. So next Tuesday on your agenda, you will have, um, be asked to take action to adopt a resolution to increase our, um, existing property tax exemptions. So the forty thousand, an increase to forty thousand would be a twenty thousand dollar increase, and incrementally up, um, each year after that. So within the resolution, um, we do have to put an amount, uh, what amount you want for your increases. And so it, just asking if you could provide any of that direction tonight, so we could have that resolution ready for adoption, um, on Tuesday. There will be two separate resolutions, one for over sixty-five and one for your disabled veterans.
And I believe Travis County just adopted forty-five percent, is that, I mean, forty-five thousand, excuse me.
Who, who did?
Travis County.
I thought they.
I, I believe that's correct, forty-five.
At our last meeting, we had a discussion about moving it to forty-five versus seventy, I don't know if you remember, Jim? And we had a discussion about the pros and cons of that, and for the lack of me, I.
I, I thought we, I thought we kind of settled on fifty.
I, I thought you were.
I thought we took fifty, okay.
Yeah, I didn't.
Did we?
I don't remember that.
You gave us, um, to look at a couple, um, it was kind of the end of, so I, I don't have the forty-five, or do we have the forty-five thousand number?
I don't, it would be, be between the twenty and the one forty for the, so it would be right in the middle.
What was the argument of fifty over seventy, do you remember Doug?
Cost.
Yeah.
Overall cost, but what was the, that right there, the significance of, oh, how it projects per year, yeah.
And again, those would be impacts to your general fund, um, revenue.
And this is something that can go up or down from year to year, so you, if you wanted to phase it, if you want to do forty-five this year, and then see how that goes, you could, you could step this, then it'll all have to be at one time either.
I'm so happy.
And we have traditionally.
I am so happy, it's raining, it's raining, is it raining? That's amazing.
Melissa, on, depending on where we get on this, whether it's fifty or seven, whatever the number may be, uh, and for James, you said it go, can go up and down, so vis a vis our tax rate, how, how would that kind of push the tax rate or not push the tax rate?
It wouldn't have any impact on this year's tax rate at all, because the, it goes into impact, effect for next year's appraisals. But it does reduce your overall appraised values.
Correct.
Well, we've had a discussion, do we want to keep it at fifty, or do you want, do we want to put it at fifty or seventy? I know you proposed seventy, were correct?
Yes.
And then, but Doug, you were pushing more for fifty?
Uh, I was at fifty. I was also looking at the homestead at the time, but I think we, uh, we moved past that.
And just so y'all know, I mean, I've, I've learned things about, you, there are veterans, um, that already receive a state exemption, um, veterans do, and also some disabled. So there's, we do have individuals that are in those statuses that pay zero in taxes, so it may not even help those that have the state exemption, just.
Right.
How often can the changes be made, repealed, increased, or decreased?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
So we could take small incremental changes and implement those over a period.
So I'll be, I'll be, that's what we'd recommend, I would start with forty thousand. When, when I start looking at the expenditures that are needed, and to, to be real frank, we didn't even go to three point five percent last year. We went to a negative percent. If you really calculate it, we didn't even hit three point five percent. And for twenty years, we've decreased the tax rate, it's actually like a negative point oh two. So we asked voters to vote and do a hundred ninety-one million dollars worth of bonds, and we didn't increase tax rate, we, we know that's clear, but we didn't even get to the voter approval rate of three point five percent. The problem with it now is, is that, that gap that we're making up for. I would prefer that we start with forty thousand, see how we do, we'll continue to grow, we'll continue to see good numbers. Our debt capacity is great, sitting on thirty-five percent in fund balances, we're looking healthy. Um, but I also like to make, I like to make shelter for a rainy day, um, is that I, I get a little, I'm a little conservative on this. In the fact that I would start at forty, we've never done it before, forty's honorable, uh, uh, extra forty thousand exemption is honorable, um, and then we.
It's an extra five thousand. It's not an extra forty.
Yeah, we're currently at thirty-five.
I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, extra five, um, you're right, you're right, it's extra. I believe Travis County went to forty-five thousand, so that's going, that's going to help. That's totally y'all's call, we just need a number to stick in.
How much did the appraised value jump this year, on average?
A billion dollars.
Yeah, really?
Ten percent on homestead, homestead homes.
Ten percent, okay. Yeah, if we're gonna, wouldn't mine meet in the middle at forty-five, or, or did you have another option? Not option, but recommendation, Jim?
I mean, yeah, the, my ask, uh, has always been to double it to seventy. And, and, you know, I, I, I see the impact that, that that'll have. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my stake in the ground there and ad, advocate for that, see where everyone else lands. I think one of the things that, I mean, I've been around long enough on council to know that we've always been very conservative over the years. And, um, and we've always had a pretty healthy, uh, fund balance, and we've never been in situations where we're in a, I mean, there was a year, one year where we, I think, did hold up merit increases or something like that. But wasn't anything critical, we did go back and, and do the, the pay increases. But, uh, and I don't think we'll ever get to that situation where Hutto was in a couple of years ago, or three years ago, and had to lay off people because of their, you know, I think they still have budget issues, but, uh, I've been very impressed with, uh, how our finances have, uh, looked over the years, and I'm talking about fifteen years now, and, um, and especially with all the development we've had and projects, I mean, we're a pretty positive-growth city, and, uh, never had to be in a critical situation. So while I certainly would support a, um, an increase in the exemption, um, and Jim, I, uh, respect your position, I think maybe seventy's a little too high at this point, and if we can increase it next year, then, you know, we can incrementally get there, I think, over time.
Well, I, I just pulled up, uh, what it looks like Travis County is, is offering, and they are offering a twenty percent homestead exemption. And then on top of that, an additional eighty-five thousand dollar exemption for homesteads of those sixty-five or older or disabled. So Travis County is offering a much, much more generous exemption than we are.
And, and that's, that's not even apples and oranges.
At a lower rate, at a lower rate.
That's apples and, and Longhorn steers.
It's a different dollar mill.
Yeah.
But duly noted.
The amount of inventory that, on the ad valorem tax rolls for the Travis County is ridiculous in terms of what.
And the, and the commercial to residential balance are quite a bit different when you look at downtown office.
So, it's not even, it's not even, the, the number has no meaning to compare it, is my point.
Well, I, I, I disagree that it has no meaning, I think it supports your argument that to, to go to seventy. Especially since we're not doing anything on, uh, general homestead exemption.
It, it was interesting what Travis County put out, though, as I recall, and if you've got it there, maybe you can quote it. They, they mentioned how much the increase was going to save, uh, disabled or senior homeowners.
Right, it's, it's something like a ten to one.
And they also, uh, listed how much it was going to increase, uh, the taxes for, uh, for a homesteaded or other taxpayer.
Right.
Because it, it is largely, other than the, the amount we see here, it is largely a shift from one, one payer to the other. We're, we're just moving where the money comes from.
Yeah.
And I, I do, I, I do have concerns with shifting a burden to our other homeowners.
It, that's certainly one way to look at it, and, and the way that I will, uh, uh, look at it, my, the perspective that I will provide on that, uh, although I'm not eligible yet for the sixty-five, uh, exemption, uh, but I, a few years I will be.
Get close.
Get close, thank you, sir. The, um, uh, the, the, the argument that I would make is that, uh, those folks that are over sixty-five and/or disabled, uh, may have, uh, less ability to afford, uh, and, and to maintain, uh, the tax increases on their properties. And so, and so my focus there, um, although originally I thought there would be a zero sum, I thought it would be a shift completely from one group to the other, and now I understand that there's a potential, uh, projected revenue loss that compounds over time. And, and as concerning as that is, uh, I will still maintain that, that, that we should go for the, the seventy thousand dollar exemption, uh, to, to provide some relief for those that are most vulnerable in our housing market.
But at the same time, you're making an assumption when you conflate the appraisal increase with a tax increase. Because until we see our actual tax rate in our median homestead or home value, we won't know if they're going to be paying more or less in real dollars.
By that argument, you, you, your, your, uh, earlier argument is also moot, because you don't know if there's actually going to be a shift of a burden from, from one, one group to another until we get that rate.
This is true.
So, uh, yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, it, it's, it's a, it's a multi-variable equation, there's a lot of things to contend with. Uh, I've taken my position and, and, and I respect the, the group think, uh, where we all land on it, uh, is, is what will be best for the city.
And as Melissa said, this will be on our agenda for next week.
You'd like direction.
So we would like, unless you want me to make three resolutions, um, which is fine, um, we being Charlie.
I'll just plug in another one.
And, uh, plug in, yeah, and we could have a pick one, is that? The only reason I kind of say I'm cautious, that we're still working on the budget, so that helps us know what I gotta cut.
Well, I, I absolutely think that, that we should have a call to question at some point here in this discussion and, and provide that direction.
I, do, do I have action on?
I may not be an actual.
Yeah, you only just.
Right, it's not final action.
We need to, we need to find a way to count four on over.
It's not final action, yeah. But I'd like to know what you're writing in a resolution, sure. How about you, do you want to keep moving, y'all want to simmer on it, or? Are you ready?
I got, I got figures.
We're on it now, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with fifty. That's where, that's where I was, uh, comfortable.
I like it.
And, and I, yeah, that's where I'm comfortable.
I like forty-five, but, you know, I'm, I'm negotiable.
I'm now at forty-seven, okay.
I'm good with fifty as well.
Okay.
Um, I have on my paper forty-five, um, it was different, um, until I realized the revenue loss. Um, and because we can increase it over time, I'm gonna stick with forty-five for now.
I'm with Jim, I want to go seventy.
So.
We got two seventies, seven fifties.
Clear, we're all clear.
Wait, wait, I, I, I appreciate that, sir. But, but if I'm counting two fifties and two forty-fives, I'll go with fifty to make it three.
Well, I would say, I would say at least the, uh, the forty-fives might not be comfortable with fifty, but the seventies might be a little bit satisfied with, with fifty.
Fifty is, fifty is certainly better than nothing.
Fifty is, fifty is better than forty-five. Um, I think we've got fifty.
I'm still gonna come with forty-five and see what y'all do, I'm just.
See, there's a compromise where everybody wins.
There you go, there you go. That's how those work.
You want Christina?
The next item for discussion is, um, the ARPA, um, American Rescue Plan Act. So the city was awarded six point one million, and we have taken action to obligate two point two million. So our unallocated funding is three point nine million.
And when's the deadline for this? That we have to.
Twenty-four.
We have twenty-one to commit, twenty twenty-six to, and to expend.
And this is our, I'm sorry, I'm reading the, when do we get the additional three million?
So, um, uh, go back for one second, let me go through that. It's not additional, it's that we haven't, we haven't committed it, but, but we have something new for you today, that we would, we'd like to make you a deal.
Do, do we have the, do we have the money in the bank, or are we waiting for the?
I think the money's in the bank. I think it's on our general ledger, I mean, it's, money's here.
Yeah.
Right?
Has it, have the feds written us that check yet, or?
There was, there was one tranche, and then I don't remember.
So we should have received it, but the federal treasury system has had a technical error with our account. And so the reporting requirement hasn't been able to be submitted, and we have an ongoing list of I T technical back and forth.
But we have until twenty twenty-six to figure that out.
Yes, so I, there's an, an issue with the Flugerville account, and we're working through it, it's a technical glitch on the federal treasury.
So the deal that we have for you today, so I want y'all to remember, we totaled six point one, we've obligated two point two, we've got to remember a remainder of three point nine eight. Okay, here's the news.
So last month, we brought a notice of intent to issue tax-supported debt of twenty-one point eight eight million, okay? Part of that twenty-one point eight eight million included the projects and items listed on the screen here that are eligible for ARPA funding. So should we allocate ARPA funding in lieu of issuing debt over the life of the twenty-year bonds? That would save our taxpayers two point two million in the reduction of cost of capital.
Yes.
We're just using one pot versus the other, that's all this is.
What's the, what's the fiber ring down there at a million dollars, what's that?
It is investment in our technology.
So it's basically, it's connecting, it's connecting critical infrastructure, water, wastewater, we're gonna do, it's not gonna be a fiber ring, we, it's kind of, that project has evolved, there's gonna be a similar solution to provide that connectivity, but basically it's the infrastructure to support water, wastewater, to make sure all those systems.
Could it be SCADA and police?
Uh, does it come mingle with police, it's just SCADA, right? And I guess, I think it's just water, wastewater facilities was the intent on that.
Okay, so it's internal to the city?
Correct, yeah.
To, so that our departments can talk to each other more efficiently?
Yes, so those facilities are all connected.
So, so our equipment can talk to each other, and we can make sure that it's all operating.
Right, yeah, our equipment, not, not so much our people, right.
Tell me those are L E D lights?
No, that would be more expensive.
For eighteen forty-nine?
Eighteen forty-nine?
Actually, eighteen forty-nine may be those, go ahead, Sean.
I was gonna ask you about eighteen forty-nine.
Yeah, they'll be the same lights that we're using currently out there at eighteen forty-nine, which are, uh, an L E D track of sports light.
That you can control with your iPhone?
Yes, sir.
What's your favorite color?
What's this, what's the login for that?
Yeah.
I would have to ask that.
Like, we would give him that.
So I'm good, I'm good with L E D lighting, uh, I'm, I'm looking just, especially with the streetlight replacing, that we, we start looking at that.
So all of those projects are already approved in our C I P, and we will be issuing debt next month to fund those projects.
We already approved each of the debt.
That's what I was about to ask.
And all of these are eligible for the ARPA money?
We're just saying what pot to pull it from.
That seems like a really, really easy way to go.
This is the less expensive pot.
There you go.
But, so we would like to do that, unless y'all had a plan for that ARPA, but all of those meet the requirements, it still serves our residents, it does great things for residents.
Which, which comes with more restrictions, the C I P or ARPA?
Um, restrictions would be ARPA, yeah, absolutely.
What do we do? Because we're pulling it from the ARPA fund. Because we're pulling it from the ARPA fund, and we're pulling the CIP.
Because we make up our own CIP.
I mean, I mean, they're, they're different restrictions.
CDPG is different.
We also, we also did, uh, you know, small business grants through this funding, right?
We already did it.
How, are, are we feeling comfortable that we allocated enough?
Yes, I, the last I checked was two weeks ago. Have, have y'all heard anything different? But, but to say, if you wanted to ever do that, you can. You can use general fund money. In other words, you could still use funds to do that.
Yeah, but I, I couldn't use debt service funds for that kind of thing.
Right.
I mean, this is debt service being COs, but COs are very vulnerable to structure.
I see what you mean. You would just use general fund.
So, I mean, there, there are different options for each, and one's not necessarily better than the other. Uh, but no, I, I like this idea of spending the ARPA funds to offset the COs.
Save on interest.
This was what, about a hundred thousand somewhere on that?
Two point two million is what we would say.
No, after, this will, I mean, there's three point, three nine eight zero, so three, I'm gonna do that.
Enough to cover the cost of warrants.
Yeah.
We, I mean, yeah, there's, there's, uh, a hundred and five thousand left over, but.
It's not down to the penny, you're right. There's some change in there. And we have until twenty-twenty-six to, so that could be the extra pot.
And the fiber.
Do you need directions on this today, or not?
I prefer it because that's a big number for us to make a decision.
My only problem is you're not giving us a lot of, enough time to kinda chew on this and see what other areas we might think that, uh, for the city would, uh, would, would this money could go towards. You know, who, you know, you could give us other options, and then all of a sudden we're saying, well, I like that better than paying for, uh, eighteen forty-nine, which I know Rudy would love, but, you know.
So the way I look, I, I'm with you, in, in terms of having to make a decision, but, but what I'm looking at is we're, we're forecasting a, a savings of two point two on COs, where if you decide, or we decide that there's something that we need, we can issue a CO for it. And, and recover that. Uh, but this allows us to move, uh, with, with speed, which is unusual for government, uh, to, to, to save some money and.
Yeah, it's just the allocation. But, you know, let's say, you know, you, we go in and we find that, you know, building hypothetically, an auditorium instead of the one point five million, I know an auditorium's way more than one point five.
Not even gonna touch it.
But, yeah, no, I'm, I, you know, just saying that, are we, if we say yes to the three point eight today, are we obligated to that?
So you're, to be frank, you're already obligated to that, because y'all have already approved the COs for that, and you've already approved all the projects.
No, 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 are we obligating the ARPA money to that?
That's what we would be giving you.
Yes, it would be, um, because what I'm gonna do, instead of next week of issuing those COs, we just wouldn't do it, so then I do need to know, no, no.
But technically, we've got the authorization to issue the COs.
I could do it later. I could do it later.
If in, if in three years, we decide, no, we wanna spend the ARPA money on something else, we could change which pocket the money goes.
Or we make the decision.
I'm okay with allocation, and I just, you know, if you gave it, we'd chew on it.
I, I'm. It's also more advantageous to issue bigger chunks of debt sometimes. You wouldn't wanna like, go back and.
And, right, we'd only issue three point nine.
In fairness to.
We won't be issuing more.
In fairness to Councilmember Ruiz's point, we could kick this to Tuesday's agenda and put it on the agenda for a vote, if you, if you wanted to. I, I just wanna make sure people are comfortable. Cause it's definitely, this isn't some, this isn't a shell game. We're, we're, we are trying to be as transparent as possible. I know we brought the ARPA conversation to the council eight times, I, I, you know, and I was hoping that by now we would have some, we didn't know how to use that other three point, right? Like, I mean, I legitimately didn't know.
No, the, the only, the only other thing I think would be potentially appropriate is the small business grants, but if we're, if we're doing well on that, um, I don't think our businesses are hurting that much anymore.
And there'll still be a little bit left in there, yeah.
This seems entirely appropriate.
I mean, we, we, we could put the, the whole three point nine on Kelly Lane, but is that gonna make Kelly Lane moving faster?
Not ARPA.
No, it's not, yeah, that ain't well covered.
Right.
Good, good thinking, though, I mean, I'm with you.
It's an infrastructure project.
Yeah, once we commit the funds, we do have to report that to Treasury in their quarterly reports, so we, we would need, that's part of the commit by twenty-twenty-four and expend by twenty-twenty-six.
The police department generator is a public safety project, that's obviously a core. The next three are all federal mandates. Now we're using federal money to pay for a federal mandate. That's a great idea.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Okay, eighteen forty-nine park, that's, that's all about making Rudy happy. And, well.
And Shane.
And Shane, yeah.
Trail connectivity, you know, that's, that, that's been a twenty-year-plus project for us.
I know.
And the fiber ring, I, I think, you know, Doug, I think you understand how essential that technology is. I, it seems to be like a good.
We're, we're doing all this anyway.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the fact that we're using ARPA money, that makes sense to me.
Me too.
From a financial, I mean, this is a financial conversation.
The CIP, we have, how many more things do we have allocated from CIP? I'm sure there's a hundred more.
Yeah.
We might be able to say, hey, I don't wanna use eighteen, pay for eighteen forty-nine, I wanna pay for some other project that may, I'm just saying, give me a week.
These are the ones that are eligible for ARPA funding.
So this is how we, this is how we came down this list. We looked at what was already funded, and what we were gonna issue, and said which ones go to ARPA.
Which, which fit in.
It was that simple. We didn't, it wasn't really about what type of project, it was whether or not we could do it.
Hey, Jim, what's, what's that? Omar, are you over there?
Ride on.
Move forward.
I just said that was Jeff.
No, I mean, yeah, yeah, absolutely. If, give, give me a week, and I will give you ten different ways to spend that same exact amount of money. Right? And, and, and so the fact that we've got things that we've already agreed on to spend money on, let's use this money to do that, and as we develop more ideas for things that we need, then we'll figure out appropriate funding sources for those.
Yes.
I'm counting head nods, I'm moving on.
Okay.
Count, counting the, the Omar.
Call me anytime.
No, that was March.
March?
See, I told you that was it, I told you.
We're good, timeline.
As we look at the next, um, the budget timeline and the next steps, so as we mentioned, on June twenty-eighth, we will be bringing you a budget adjustment to increase cost of living, um, at five percent. Um, this is an adjustment, not an amendment. We will not be requesting to, and to, and then to the budget ordinance. We will be funding this through salary savings.
Say again? Funding this through?
Salary savings from the vacancies.
There are people who we haven't hired yet, but we've authorized.
We're, we're the folk too, but we haven't.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out there, cause I like to just slow things down a little bit sometimes. Is, is five, I, I heard, I heard our city manager talk about the, uh, that this, this doesn't even get us to mid-market. Uh, and so with the salary savings for the unfilled positions, is there an opportunity to go more than five percent?
Yes.
And so, so what could we go to?
If you go to forty-five thousand on the exemption, I'm.
You're just being silly.
But there's some truth to that, some truth, some truth.
So we saved two point two million dollars. We're, we're balanced that up. What are you talking about?
Oh, when is our official compensation study happening, James?
It would kick off in October.
Yeah, so I'm not doing a full, real, legit compensation study until FY twenty-three. I'd like to get that back. We know from, we, we poll, I mean, we're, we're always polling the other cities and know where they're at, so we have a, a decent guess that this little over what I'm gonna call an eight percent increase from next week to October will be okay for FY twenty-three, and then I'm gonna bring you back a compensation study.
But, I mean, ever, ever since I've, I've been on council, it seems like we've been, been asking our staff to, to come work here for less money in a closet.
In a closet.
Simply because we spell everything with a PF, and we're cool.
We are cool.
Now that's a winning, winning deal, because look at the amazing staff we have, but, but I still think maybe we need to be doing more than that.
We do. Um, and just from the numbers, that I'm losing people to a competitive market. I'm looking at that on citizen reviews, I'm seeing us do that. Um, I'd be happy to relook at some numbers too, um, and see if there's something more to do.
So, so the presumption is that five percent is a conservative increase based on, uh, cost savings and, and unfilled positions and salary. Beautiful. Is that sustainable? Because once we fill those positions, that cost savings won't be there, so we've gotta look at revenues for that. But, but it, wherever those graphs are intersecting in the future, is, can we make that a seven percent COLA, or, or?
Sure, so, sure we could. So the, the salary savings is two point nine-ish this year, um, projected for FY twenty-two. The cost of a five percent currently is under four hundred thousand. So sure, that there are salary savings in there to be able to do that. So let me take a look at it. Yes, it compounds. I mean, I, I have to recognize that that five to seven percent compounds forever. Do I think that that will still not have us at mid-market? I think it's still highly probable. So I wouldn't mind at all looking at five to seven percent.
It may not have us at mid-market, but it gets us closer.
It gets us closer, so the way.
It puts us on that next year.
Sure.
Now we have a better percentage increase.
What I'd like to do in FY twenty-three is come to you and say, we wanna get to this, and it's gonna take me probably three, five, however long to get to there. And, and I could tell you stories, you know, y'all compare us a lot to, for example, the city of Frisco. City of Frisco put their stake down years ago and said, we will be the highest paid for city employees in the state of Texas. I don't know if they still are, but they're pretty close to it. They retain and recruit great staff. I'm not saying I don't have it. I'm saying my ability, my retention is starting to make me nervous.
Yeah, but Frisco's not PF.
They're not as cool, not near as cool.
It's so, it's so far north, crazy cold out there.
I don't, it's like in Wake, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Southern Oklahoma.
So let me, let me crunch those a little bit, um, and see what that two percent delta does currently, and then what it may do in October, um, from a financial standpoint, but I'd, I'd be happy to look at that.
Well, I think that certainly it's a, um, a great foundation for us to, to begin in terms of letting our staff, letting our employees know that we are concerned about them, and we're gonna try to do whatever we can. I know that depending on how the economy goes and everything else, I think we're still gonna be, let's say we make that seven percent, ten percent raise, well, guess what? Georgetown and Cedar Park, they're gonna jump again, so we're always gonna be competitive, unfortunately, uh, or maybe under competitive, so I don't know. I mean, it'll help, but.
I mean, that's our constant issue, is that when we watched, um, I don't, I don't wanna rattle off the surrounding cities' numbers, cause I'll get them wrong, but they're, they're doing mid-year COLAs now, they're doing, um, so, yeah, we're, if we're already ten percent behind.
Are we keeping up, or are we leading the way?
We're, we're not even keeping up. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna.
Well, we're, we're trying to keep up.
We're, we're trying to keep up, but as, as I'm looking at, um, and I think that on PD, that's going, we're getting them there. That, that PD is gonna be fine. I'm worried about the fifteen dollar and twelve cent employee, um, that's not there, that will leave absolutely for two dollars more.
What, what's our plan to, to get to a spot?
I wanna do that FY twenty-three study. I wanna get them at least eight percent in between now and October, at least eight percent raises, which is what we've baked in, do an FY twenty-three. And then I might be coming to you either mid-year or the next year to get us to where, because these other cities are going up in October too.
So, and, and I wanna, uh, thank you for, for reminding us about those fifteen eighteen, fifteen oh seven, whatever it was, wage earners. I, I wanna remind everyone that it, that an equitable solution may not be an even percentage across the board.
For example, in the step program, it's not necessarily.
Right, and so, and so we may, for our COLA increase, presumably the feds will let us do the same thing in terms of it, COLA doesn't have to be a flat percentage across the board. We can tier that to make sure that we bring those fifteen dollar wage earners up at a, at a higher rate.
Can I give you another, the way a study will probably pan out? Every study I've ever done does this. Yes, I've done that, um, in history. COLA would probably be a percentage, it's gonna be those market adjustments that we've done before. You saw us do it last year. That's where some will make a fifteen percent, some may make a two, some will make zero. So we're saying this year, we're not doing that yet. I'm gonna do that in FY twenty-three.
Thanks for reminding me that I'm gonna get the zero group.
The, um, we are doubling your salary next year. Um, so, so absolutely, it's not always a percentage. On COLA, right now, it is.
Right.
Cause we know at every level, it's, it's needed.
I'd, I'd like to see you make more progress on those, those fifteens.
Thank you, me too.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, right now, the city of Austin has employees that they're paying fifteen, and their goal is to get those people to a minimum of twenty-two in three years, is that correct?
I don't know what their, I don't know, I, I don't wanna quote what their minimum is. I know that we compare our fifteen twelve to other cities, and we know we're low. I shouldn't use Austin all the time, I was just kinda, cause that was fresh, um, cause I don't use Austin as a comparison in salaries.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of.
But I do know that I heard an employee of mine say, uh, cause they read the articles too, right, and said, I wonder what's open in streets, you know, in there, so, yeah. So we're looking at the Round Rock, the Georgetown, the Leanders, we're looking at that. Um, fifteen twelve is better than where we were three years ago, um, significantly. So I have to look, but, um, no, we need that base, that, that line worker raised. This would get them, based on what I've done, gets them a two dollar increase by October. They're leaving right now for a two dollar increase.
Is that how it works?
Let's solve that problem. That, that should be even easier thing. We could use ARPA funds.
This is gonna go on for about a month.
Okay.
So in July, we'll come back to you with another budget workshop. We'll be covering our, and utility funds and our special revenue funds, and on July fourteenth.
Is that a Thursday? I just wanna remind y'all, put these on your calendars. If we haven't already done it for you. We've done it for you. Read your calendars, um, cause that one's on a Thursday.
So on August first, you will be receiving your, uh, proposed budget for your review before it is circulated to the general public. On August ninth, in a council meeting, we will review our proposed budget. We will also, um, have an action veto on the proposed action. On August twenty-third, we will begin our public hearings, and then in September, we will adopt, on September thirteenth, we will adopt our tax rate and adopt our budget, our master fiscal, and we will ratify our tax.
So, um, what we did prepare for you today, cause it depended on how much y'all wanted to go into detail, because, um, there may or may not be members sitting at this table that I know wanna go into real deep dives. And you will get that, um, but we're still some time away. What I, I did prepare for you today was real high-level departments, or you can just take this pack at home, read it quickly and ask questions, cause I think you're gonna have a lot more questions, um, in six weeks. So we can take time today, Mayor, to go through each of them, or, or we can hand it to you and say.
Well, I would say since, and, you know, I know we have one council member missing, um, but if we have questions today, we may have those same questions again, and so we get into wasting time at that point. So I don't know, I'm, whatever the council decides. I don't know if we can get into that many, how, how late we move.
They're great pictures.
They are great pictures. They are great pictures.
There's a, there's a guy in the legal.
Kenny Rogers. That is our counsel, yeah, city attorney Kenny Rogers.
I think that's a visitor from Westlife.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Hold on, let's on a two-second slide, just click through two slides so they, so that I can see the pictures actually.
Yes, on the big screen.
Oh, those are good, those are really good. Crystal with the bunny.
So I'm a, I'm a big fan of, of, uh, going over it now, just cause we're here.
I, I mean, just briefly.
Sure, let's go, um, I'll, yeah, take us through that.
Ten thousand foot view.
No, no, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that, the increase in city management is an additional, uh, we've got an additional headcount there, that makes plenty of sense, so.
Okay, so the way that we're gonna orient, orient you to each of the slides is the same for each department, so that first column being your amended budget, uh, then what we think we're gonna land at, and then our total numbers, um, at the end. So, um, if you don't have questions, I'll move on.
Very expensive money.
Yep, very.
Is Charlie asking for more money, or is that, uh?
Five percent.
Yes, five percent.
So the legal budget includes a five percent increase to align with cost of living adjustment, as well as an increase to special projects.
Is that based on? We, we kept that, uh, just four seventy-six for this year?
We're projecting, yeah.
So in, in that request, or in that increase, is it based on a tiered, uh, hourly rate, or is it one hourly rate, or do you have numbers to?
It's, it's his, basically his hourly rate, um.
Cause I, you know, I've.
I'm so sorry, should I put some?
It's, it's tiered.
It's different based on presence, and then he has the prosecutor rate, and then you have the rate for the one that comes for planning, and so, I mean, there, yeah, there's, there's different rates.
We've got a number of different attorneys working for.
Tiered rates, the, um, the hours, and we kept the same, and only increased the rates by five percent, and to have to the.
I was just kinda wondering if we could get cheaper attorneys.
Um, I would not suggest a cheaper attorney.
Don't do that.
Is this, no, I mean, within the law.
Compared to cities that have their own departments, and we, we get the breadth of his entire firm within that rate. Whereas if we were to.
Thank you. I, I think the point was, um, I'll, I'll have a conversation with legal about that.
This, but this four seventy-six doesn't include the outside counsel that we've had to work on various litigation matters, does it?
If those are, and billed to general fund, it would be billed to your legal. And some of the outside legal things, um, are also, if. some of the outside legal things, um, are also, if they're utility, supporting utility, they'd be billed to your, the utility.
Our T M L, uh, coverage, we have T M L coverage cover some of our legal costs on TV.
Paid for by insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not a separate line item, but that's insurance.
What about the, like, the, uh, disputes, uh, with, uh, uh, s- the street issues? Are those going to be covered out of the utility fund rather than, uh, or than in the general fund legal?
Streets, general, on streets. Water, wastewater, out of enterprise fund.
Okay. So those are, those are bills from lawyers, but they're not in this budget?
Is that right? Are we showing without cost allocation to those departments, is that number, the final number, or is that number, there's also where, like, cash, or these other legal issues, or they build somewhere else, or reflected somewhere else, excuse me?
If they are for general, um, legal services, they're billed to the general fund. If they are specific to a, um, a project, then they are billed to that project, and we go through and allocate depending on what's allowed to be funded.
So this is not the total sum of all legal fees?
This is not.
Do, do we have that number somewhere? I'd really like to see that number.
Our next budget, so each time I come to you, we'll have that in there, is what I'll make sure of. But right now, I'd like to make note in the Friday Weekly, let's just pull each legal expense, send it to them on Friday.
Okay.
Legal budget, excuse me, each.
Because do we have a legal line items in each department budget?
No.
No, that's why I'm, that's why I'm, I want to.
Yeah, I'm not sure where else we can land. I, I think that may be.
I think we're using the word bill. I want to use the word budget. Where are the budgeted amounts, and I want to make sure that's.
General fund and water wastewater fund.
Okay. So there, there is a line, a legal?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so let's pull that line and.
I'm going to pull those lines, send it to them on Friday.
All right.
And, and then I, I take it that legal budget is funded by rates? Is that the idea? We're not funding the utility, legal fees through general fund?
Correct. All, it is standalone. It is supported by its revenue generatings.
Okay.
Okay, but.
So.
We have, say we have a dispute on a street, obviously, that's not water wastewater.
Not water wastewater is going to be general fund.
Yeah.
That would be in that number, your four forty-six.
Legal expenses.
Four seventy-six covers all of our litigation regarding street issues?
Again, no.
Again, no. That one, no. Let me, um, I'm going to get you, I'm going to get you that information.
That's billed under a specific project.
I'm, I'm clear where we're going with that.
So since this is a, kind of a contracted service, so the projected, okay, it doesn't matter what the number is. Let's say it's four hundred and forty-six doll, four hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So at the end of the year, do we expend all of that, or is there any money left over?
Oh, the, we plan to spend all of that.
No, no, I'm not saying we, the, the attorney, the legal folks bill for the full amount.
It's billed for what's used, and it's very closely monitored throughout the year by both us and, and, and Charlie's firm, and they come very close to keeping it within that. I have a feeling that they probably could exceed it if they didn't monitor it closely.
That's a monthly bill that's line item viewed. Let me be clear, there have been expenses for legal that we did not assume would happen, that have been paid at the dais through settlements that were funded out of fund balance, not out of this line item. So that, when we say there's other, we don't, I don't put a line item assuming we're going to lose a lawsuit. I don't.
Right, I'm not talking about the, about the settlement numbers, although I'd like to see those, too. I'm talking about, you know, we hire a lawyer who doesn't work with Charlie's firm to represent us in a litigation matter. Win or lose, that guy charges us an hourly rate. Where is that?
I will, I will make sure I have the right answer. Get that to you on Friday.
All right, thank you. Jim, do you have any questions?
Yes, but not right now.
There we go.
Now Kim's doing it.
We'll have to thank Jeff Marsh for that.
So our people and culture department, we are increasing headcount by one position as a personnel, and cost reflecting that as well as a cost to the merit and cost of living. Um, and, uh, operating increases a little bit over about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, this does include, um, cost for your compensation study for next year, as well as an additional.
And where do the people in culture, people live?
Next door.
Then one hundred.
The bank.
West.
Okay.
With no windows.
We're in the vault.
They have to go outside for lunch. Yeah, they get yard.
Right, so the finance department is re-increasing the two positions, but those will be to support and purchasing functions, to centralize that function, um.
Can I, I'm going to, uh, this is what I was waiting for, Councilmember Rogers. As we centralize items, as we make work order systems, as we do things that provide for efficiencies, that lessens the burden of the support, for example, for engineering, if I can take purchasing away from them. So you're really adding it here. That, that's, um, so what we originally, what we've done forever is everybody was on their own to do their own purchasing.
Right, we had point five purchasing.
Point five, if that, and now, so that will provide capacity in engineering, for sure.
Okay.
Who's our purchasing director?
Our purchasing manager is Brian Gray.
Is he here?
He's, um.
He's not here this evening.
He's, um, spoken at Equity Commission quite a few times, and is working with them pretty nicely.
So question, quick question, uh, so, some napkin math here. I've got, uh, budgeted seventeen members, uh, per capita sixty-seven K, nineteen, uh, members in that department per capita goes to eighty-nine K?
There's benefits in that number, too.
Again.
Yeah, roll up is the.
It, it's the average significantly increases instead of, right, if we were just adding two, if we were adding two people, seventeen to nineteen, adding two people, that would be sixty-seven, that'd be a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase from this number to this number, if it was at the same everything, but it's increasing. And so, so what you're saying is that benefits, insurance, is what the driver costs, and so even if it was seventeen, we see a huge increase.
What's our average benefits rollup? Thirty fi, uh, thirty-five percent? Way higher.
Like, you know, about forty-five.
Forty-five percent? So I've got to be thinking forty-five percent on the salary for benefits. So it depends which positions are those that are being added?
A purchasing specialist and a purchasing agent, but in your personnel.
I'd say they're mid-range within that department on salary.
The increase there is not just the two new positions, it also your merit and cola to the entire base.
Yeah, all of them.
And all of the benefits.
Yeah, Jim, I think that's the same question I was asking at the beginning.
I think so, sir.
Yeah, basically.
But benefits are rising.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can compare it to the pace, but yes, they're rising exponentially.
So if we look at the communications department, communications is also adding, um, a new position for a content management specialist.
So what is the content management specialist doing in the communications department? What exactly, how does that, explain that position?
Terry can talk about it.
Well, one of our key items in the budget is looking at updating our city's website, and we are looking at someone to help support that as we can start a whole new redesign. We're also looking at enhancing our platform. The one that we have currently isn't as supported anymore, as it's becoming out of date. At the same time.
That's a problem.
Yes. Um, at the same time, this position is also going to help with some additional web training and support to departments. So we're looking at some support to that part of our division.
Okay. Thank you.
So with an information technology, we're also adding, um, one position, a field technician.
Okay, just, sorry, uh, communication department, so their, their average is going down, which is, is an outlier.
And, and their headcount going down, too?
No, increased by one, but I don't see the same cost of living, insurance increase on that one.
Well, from five twenty-two last year to six oh four.
Eighty, eighty-seven, in, in FY twenty-two projected, uh, which is close to that, I minded, eighty-seven K and, and eighty-six K twenty-three.
It's a forty thousand dollar position.
So Jimmy, you do need to be comparing, and it may not apply in this one, the, the budget versus not the, the amended budget, not the projected, because the projected is going to include vacancies.
Right, the amended in this case is a thousand dollars off.
It is about the same in this case.
Yeah, it's still eighty-seven.
So Jim, the content, so we have this line down to the penny for you, whenever we give that to you. This one is about a forty thousand dollar salary person.
Even then, I would think that, again, if it was six and six the next year, which maybe we'll have one of those cases, um, I would see a huge, a delta just a jump because of benefits, is what James told us earlier.
Yeah, we have that percentage. Um, I don't know if y'all have it off the top of your head, but if it stayed the same, six to six, we would know we're adding the three percent cola of merit, the five percent cola. We know the benefits on each of them down to the penny, and so now we're saying, though, I don't have that number because we're asking for another one. And then when we added the other one, it's, it increased by that amount.
I think, I think Jim's on to something here. I think you're underpaying this new communications person.
So, the, the one thing, when you're dividing it, like, by headcount per capita and stuff, all of your benefits except one will go, be a percent and move according to that person and, to that salary. The one that doesn't is your insurance. Insurance is a fixed amount per headcount. So if it's a lower paid, that's a bigger percentage of their salary, whereas you go into a higher paid, it's the same amount. That's the city funding that per headcount. So when you start dividing it by head, you're going to see that vary a little bit.
And, and I, I think premiums may be twelve thousand an employee, no matter how much they make.
I mean, I'll be, I'll be curious to look through the.
It's run. It will, it will, it is down to the penny on these.
There's some things that do seem a bit inconsistent apartment, apartment, but.
I assure you that we, to the dollar.
We'll figure it out in the details, yeah.
Thank you.
If you look at information technology, and they are adding a field technician, um, then their operating expenses are increasing about six hundred thousand. You will see, um, second year of, um, software contracts being renewed, increases to, um, end-of-life network equipment, um, and some other items. Maintenance of water tower antennas, and split fifty-fifty between general fund and utility fund, um, core switch refresh, access refresh, some of these things, I'm not really sure what they mean.
But those are all in operating, those, those don't meet that threshold per capital?
That's correct.
Okay. Is the, uh, the cost of, of moving to the justice center projected on this?
No, that'd be this current fiscal year. So it'd be projected on that middle budget. Should be in there.
Yeah, projected.
Is there software that you're purchasing in this as well?
Yeah, so all of the city's software is, um, budgeted for under the IT department.
Okay.
So that's why you have such a large, um, operating budget there. So we aggregate all of those to make sure that they meet all of our security requirements and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So like to municipal court, they are staying flat with their headcount at six F T Es. Um, their, uh, operating expenses just slightly increasing. We're looking at rebooting teen court program and resuming hearings and, and great trials. Um, we do, and are increasing our estimated expenses for product card fees as well.
The, uh, and, so one of, one of the big things that I, that I'm a huge fan of is, is going to, uh, all electronic documents. I think we've got a hybrid system now. Uh, I know I've visited, uh, Judge Slagel's court over at the, uh, J P area, and, and you go in and they got monitors everywhere, and you, you can get information, uh, every, everything's through, uh, digital medium for the folks that, that, that take advantage of that. Um, have, has, has our court talked at all about doing that, or are we in the process of working on that, or do we, is that an operating expense, or will there be a C I P expense we'll look for that?
Um, James, if you haven't given me the latest, we started that project a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've, uh, they've scanned and gotten rid of.
Everything.
Probably a dozen file cabinets, and then digitized all that kind of stuff, and then we've implemented a, a paperless version of Incode, um, so that they're digitally signing. There's no new paper being filed.
Perfect.
So if, if a document is created, it is immediately scanned and electronically stored.
Beautiful, okay. Well, very good. That, that's a win. I mean, the, the neatest thing was walking through Judge Slagel's office and seeing all the extra room, uh, and then you can tell where the file cabinets used to be, because the carpet was completely brand-new.
Those are just dirty, yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, and you can see where the traffic patterns were, wherever you went and had walked previously, so, um, but I, I, you were talking about closets and more people working. I remember touring when we were still renting space across the street over here, and all of the filing cabinets were in the hallway because th- they were trying to make room for, for more stand-up desk or wherever they could get people. And so that's a, to me, that's a, a partial solution moving forward in terms of conserving space by digitizing everything. So thank you for.
And same in finance, we've been getting rid of file cabinets. Um, when Trista took over city secretary's office, Karen's file cabinets are now gone, yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Weiss and I recently visited some city south of here and went through their records area. They had all the, the drawings and everything still in a.
If you ever want a tour of the water tower, um, at Heatherwild, Trista had, took on that project, and I know this sounds strange, but we store records in the water tower.
Sure.
Make sure. I was a little lowered by that when I first got here. It's a lot of water on top of them. Uh, but if you ever want to see that, it's really neat.
Do we keep the bunnies there?
We do not. We should. She might. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So then our police department, we're increasing two headcount, a corporal for highway enforcement, and a property tech for crime scene units.
I have a question. Um, of the one hundred and thirty-eight point five, um, how many are actually active staff on the schedule at this time?
That would be chief of. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I was bothering him.
How many vacancies?
Um, vacancies right now, none.
We have roughly nine, yes, ma'am.
I was asking, of the hundred and thirty-eight point five, how many are actually, like, on the schedule, active staff at this time?
Sworn members, sworn police officers, roughly ninety-nine.
Okay, so let, let's, let me explain that. So right now, you're short nine officers.
Yes, ma'am.
Your total sworn budgeted amount of officers is nine, and so what you're saying on the schedule would be ninety.
Ninety, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then the, the remaining, uh, forty are non-sworn officers.
Dispatch records, victim services, crime scene, yes, all of our civilian workers.
Could you, could you tell me again, I'm sorry, those three new positions, what are they?
It was a highway enforcement corporal, so we could expand our highway enforcement unit. Our property tech, which, as our calls for service continue to rise, our property techs are going out, so these are going to be the people that go out and recover that property. And then the third one is our emergency management coordinator is being moved under, uh, PD.
Do we, do we see any staffing increases, uh, for social services, or are we doing any additional training for our?
Yeah, so part of our, in our operating budget, our training has gone up for additional mental health training, crisis intervention training, so we have asked for additional money for training for, for that purpose.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
And we got a, got a, a capital expenditure for a vehicle for the citizens on patrol group?
That's going to be, that's going to come from our current fleet. As we continue to get our vehicles in, that you all have approved for us, as those continue to come in, then we'll take some of those older vehicles and give those to the C O Ps.
Not all.
You just want to ride.
I need good tires.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure.
He, he doesn't get to run it.
Disable the siren, then.
Wow.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
So if we look at the fleet department, the headcount remains at four. Um, within the fleet department, we, this is, um, where we budget for our vehicle maintenance as well as fuel for, um, all vehicles. And we are seeing an increase in vehicle maintenance costs due to maintaining an eight older fleet. Um, there is a delay in, in the delivery kind of supply chain issues with all of the leased vehicles that we have ordered. So those orders have, and are in, they are waiting at the factory, and we're looking at options for acquiring other, um, bad needed vehicles going through, and those channels, um, with our partners, our enterprise, enterprise fleet. Um, we continue to see fuel prices increase, as I'm, I'm sure you've, um, noticed as well. So increase to our fuel budget is about a hundred and eighty thousand. That increase, um, accounts for a, kind of a flat rate in fuel. Uh, the indexes are estimating next year that there will be a decrease in The indexes are estimating next year that there will be a decrease in fuel prices. I am a little hesitant to put that into our assumption, so I'm just holding it flat and at another high. We also increase consumption, assuming that we will actually get delivery of additional vehicles to accommodate the new staff that we'll be bringing onboard.
Now, these new vehicles are going to be more fuel efficient though, right? Than the ones we've got now?
When you say fuel efficient, you're talking about your larger F two fifties and F two three fifties. I'm not sure you really consider those larger trucks fuel efficient. But should they be more efficient, less costly to us on maintenance records? Absolutely.
I've heard some municipalities have been able to work with distributors to pre-buy gas when it's at a cheaper rate. Have we ever been able to do that? Or is there an option to do that?
Is that in our capital allocation?
So, one of our projects, and Brian, I apologize that I don't know where it's at right now, had asked us to look at, that's if we own, we keep our own fuel.
Is it, that's the caveat?
So I have asked us to analyze what it would take to add. So the problem, again, is space. So I didn't have this space right now at Public Works as we're expanding the wastewater plant. There's nowhere to put. Oh, because I need ability to drive through and get gas. You're putting a gas station in. What I'd like to do at the, in the Public Works master plan is we should be supplying our own fuel. We're a big enough fleet and we have been a big enough fleet to do so instead of going and buying fuel at local shell, et cetera. That way you buy on a, on a year. There're CPIs typically in those contracts. So you're buying at a rate, but they do it a rack rate. And so in other words, they're doing rack prices at the refineries and you're paying a percentage above rack rate. So you're not necessarily getting a great, great, it's still going to fluctuate.
Well, if you bought it a year.
But you're buying, but you're buying in bulk.
We're buying a truck.
You're buying in bulk is the big issue. That's right. So there's ways to do it and they'll do deals with you as how much you're buying.
Okay.
So I'd like to look at that for the new Public Works location. We just couldn't fit it somewhere.
Great question.
Great question.
If I recall correctly, when the city of Austin started doing that, one of the things that they did was when existing gas stations were closing, the city would just buy the old existing gas station and convert that from a general public use to a city use.
Smart. If y'all know of anybody closing, let me know.
I don't know that anyone's closing.
I don't know if anybody's closing.
At some point, somebody will close.
Yeah, QT just went up.
And that might be an opportunity.
I, yes.
My morning hangout.
The one just south of us.
I like the one thirty one.
So I'm, I'm curious on the fleet department, do we track our, our overall mileage? Because we, we bought a lot of new vehicles, but I don't know that that necessarily translates to additional fuel costs, additional, you know, not directly or proportionately because a lot of those were take home vehicles for, for our officers. So I would expect while we've added a bunch of additional vehicles, we haven't necessarily commensurately increased our fuel consumption.
So the fuel consumption is based on just the fuels, the vehicles that we already have rolling?
Right.
And the additional twenty that I think you're referring to for the police take home, and those actually haven't, and we haven't received those yet.
We haven't taken delivery.
Any day now. They, they are moving through. So they're not still sitting on a wish list at a factory. We will have those very soon.
They're somewhere in Iowa on, on the back of a flatbed.
They are somewhere very close in town or somewhere getting equipment, I believe.
In terms of the.
They're outfitters now.
Cost efficiencies that we looked at or that we were, we discussed with leased vehicles, are there other opportunities for us to lease vehicles?
I've met with Enterprise Fleet management pretty regularly. We are continuing to find opportunities. The tough part is, is what we put in the budget is factory direct pricing. And they're still sitting basically on that wish list. So we, we are having to make some decisions about, we have this funding available. We need X amount of vehicles. We absolutely, I think we're at four or five critical vehicles we really need right now because it's starting to impact operations. We've got crews that can't separate and go do their jobs independently because they're all having to pile in a new, in the same vehicle. So we're looking at buying vehicles that are currently sitting on dealer lots. There'll be higher rates than what we had priced out to adopt in our previous budget. We have funds that aren't being spent on those vehicles because they haven't been delivered. So we're trying to balance that. We will probably take in and probably four or five vehicles at a much higher rate. We will keep those maybe a year, maybe fourteen months and rotate them out, and out once that factory direct pricing and once that equity position makes sense. So in order to balance the funding and balance operation and impact, that's what we're looking at.
So that, that sounds more like buying vehicles and then turning them around more quickly as opposed to leasing.
It's a lease.
Okay.
But with that, we have the ability to really watch that equity position.
Gotcha.
And Enterprise Fleet really partners with us to find their opportunities because they have that big, that work.
Purchasing network.
To, to flip those vehicles.
Especially if we do the maintenance on it and bill the maintenance cost back to them.
Send them the bill, right.
See if I pay it.
The, and then as, as, as we move forward into the twenty first century, electric vehicles, in terms of, I know there's a limit in terms of how far they can, they can drive on a, on a charge. But it seems like some of the, the opportunities for meter reading or inspection teams or things of that nature might, might provide useful there.
We agree.
I'd like to see us, and I don't know, I mean, we looked at some of the cost of it.
We ran a study. We, we ran a study on the PD side. And some departments wouldn't even talk to us because it was not working out for them.
Right.
Let me be clear. But I think for some, and especially non pursuit, I'd like to look at our non sworn side to do that. I don't know if I'm going to have those numbers for this year.
Right, and well, it wasn't.
And it was really also the infrastructure that comes with it.
And I, and I think we can look to, I want to say the city of Mesquite, three years now, maybe four years ago, bought or leased a bunch of S threes and saw that, that ROI exceeded their expectations. I know the, the concern there is whether or not those are patrol vehicles and how long that battery will last in the middle of the summer because you want the AC to work. But yeah.
I mean, PD still has to put fuel in their vehicles, just like you put electricity in them, let me be clear. But I also think, and I'm going to go back to facilities, is that building a city hall with the ability to have that plug and play in the, in, in the garages will be helpful. Right now I don't have a very conducive. I mean, we're parking a lot of planning and development code enforcement next to Princess Craft. It just, it's the place to also plug in right now isn't very conducive.
Right.
So with a city hall, that would work. Public Works, I don't have a conducive place to plug in. Not, I mean, our fleet sits in an open parking lot. It's not up against a building or. So it was also just a little bit of the logistics of where to plug them in at.
Stone Hill doesn't work?
It would work for two at a time, two at a time. And most of the time, no.
Yeah, there are four there, but two of them might work.
I, I know a place has a flood right across the street, but that's a different story.
So I, I just wasn't prepared for FY twenty three to do it, mostly not thinking about the cost. It was, it's the practicality at the moment.
But building it into the city hall.
Build it in.
So as we look at facility maintenance, the headcount is staying flat at seven FTEs. Our operating expenses are going down from what you can see mainly because of some major improvements to renovations, both to CoAmerica, the renovations that were just a part of a budget amendment for this facility bowls and the, sweet three hundred, four hundred.
The upstairs.
So the expenditures that you see in FY twenty three would be ongoing, sustaining facility maintenance and cost to support that. We have some capital outlay. That includes a replacement of an air conditioning unit in the rec center, flooring at PD, Justice Center generator conversion to natural gas and a couple of other smaller items. But those are the major, those are the major costs, right, versus under the capital outlay there for your facility cost. Operations and.
That Justice Center conversion to natural gas, that, that is the additional number that we improved the ARPA funds? We have two different generators over there.
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Evan, thank you. Yeah, you've just, I have a moment of panic.
Maybe it's the same, it's the same generator. We're wanting to convert it from diesel to natural gas. It's just changing the engine out and converting it.
And then, well, we thought we had another police department.
Yeah, but that was.
I heard Justice Center and Police Department, so a conversion of the generator and then a new generator is ARPA, or was that not new?
So I think it's something that we need to, need to discuss together.
Well, what we're saying is we approved a generator at the police department already. And then I hope it's not reflected in here again. Maybe that was just a misspeak.
Maybe.
We'll take a look at it.
What did you say? The AC system, had it be put into?
Rexona.
The Rexona.
The Rexona. And that doesn't come out of Parks and Rec, did it?
No, because it's a facility maintenance item. We aggregate all facility.
A pool, but your maintenance comes out, right? I mean, if you had to do maintenance on a pool, that would come out of Parks and Rec.
Maintenance on.
Because you have offices there, maybe?
Yes, sir. The, the outbuildings, like a restroom in the park system or a pool is handled under Parks and Rec department. Anything that's a office slash is handled.
Is upstairs, is all offices.
Yep. We're doing them same way they, they pay for the cleaning out of that versus.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Under your field operations, and we have one headcount under field operations for the emergency management coordinator that is moving over to the police department. And the other item is remaining relatively flat. So under our Straits Department, we are increasing headcount by three with two equipment operators and a field operations technician. We do see a decrease in the operating cost. This is mainly attributed to the roadway rehabilitation being moved to our capital and capital projects.
So then the, the maintenance that we do, the crap chip seal, the HA five, that's all still in that number? But things like the Heatherwild project are being moved to the capital?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we know, well, we see the, the increased delta between projected and amended?
What, what is your question?
I'm not, so I, I see we budgeted one point seven. It looks like we're going to spend two point one on personnel.
No, we, we budgeted two point one.
One point seven.
Budgeted two million, yeah.
Budget is, is two million sixty nine thousand. But we're actually spending because of vacancies is a lower number.
I've been reading these backwards. Okay.
So within our library, we, we'll be adding three positions, an outreach and marketing coordinator, a library technician two supervisor and a library technician one. And then the operating expenses, the increase attributable to a needs assessment and materials increase and furniture shelves and equipment replacement. As well as your capital outlay item that does replenish your, the content, books and periodicals and materials.
That's a, that's a big jump in capital outlay from three hundred thousand to five twenty five. Why is it so large?
So the, the study's not in there. The study's in the operating, right?
Correct. The needs assessment is in operating.
Okay, so you're looking at the capital outlay.
The capital outlay is, is almost double and operating is more than double.
We should have the notes on that.
So in regard to the capital outlay, the increase to the materials is, we're currently at three hundred thousand and we're increasing that to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. There's some items that we moved out of the operating budget that really should have been in the materials budget. So that's going to be our equipment, our maker kits, non-traditional circulating items. So that is now going to be reflected in the collection budget. The one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is furniture replacement. We have been in this building now ten years. We have not replaced any of the furniture and it's starting to show. So.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and then we're going to also be increasing the number of shelves because our customer surveys have indicated that people want more stuff. We need to give them that.
Okay.
In regard to the operating budget, eighty thousand dollars of that is a needs assessment. And we are also automating a lot of processes. So we're going to be using radio frequency technology, identification technology.
RFID?
Yeah. So we will, that's about forty thousand dollars. And we will be automating some processes that will then allow me to free up our staff so that they can do more one-on-one service to the customers. And so what I'm hoping.
RFID is going to be used for checkout purposes?
It will be used for a number of things. It's inventory control. So rather than having somebody spend literally weeks pulling each book off the shelf, scanning it and then uploading it, you take the, the RFID reader and you run it down the shelf and it.
Like at a grocery store.
Yeah. So also, one of the items that we're looking at with the RFID is a materials check-in chute. So when people put their books in, it automatically checks them back in. It doesn't work great with media, but since we have a different return slot for media, it would cut the time in half that, that I would have to have somebody up there.
Okay.
So.
So that, for, for that, we're looking at a one-time expenditure and then next year, that budget in that category is going to go back down?
The labels would be an ongoing expenditure as we've got new materials. They are not cheap. There, we could purchase the equipment or we could lease the equipment. So there's both those options. Personally, I would lease it. I think that's the better option because you get upgrades and you don't incur another large expense when that becomes obsolete.
And which one do you have it budgeted for right now?
Pardon me?
Which, which do you have it budgeted for right now?
Right now it's budgeted for purchasing, but I have just received the quotes for the lease option. So.
So if you go with the lease option, we'll be looking at a, at a lower cost this one year, but then the, the ongoing cost would be a little bit more.
There are some things that we would have to purchase. The, the software would be a lease. Some of the equipment would be a lease. But things like the automatic book drop, that would be a purchase.
Right.
And the labels would be a purchase.
Okay.
Yeah. So another one of the large increases was the EV chargers. So we're, we are leasing those and they are due to be installed in July. So because the project took so long to get off the ground, that price did go up about almost fifty percent. So that was another expense.
How much usage are you, are you getting with those EV chargers?
None right now because they don't work. That's why we're replacing them.
Well, that's.
Several years ago, council had asked us to find a solution to those. And, and we got a grant to pay for part of the installation and then we will be leasing them after that.
All right. I would be interested to see what the usage is like.
Well, I mean, it seems like, isn't there some sort of bill or something going around that every fifty miles will be an EV charger station? So, yeah. So Flugerville will have, what, two, three ahead of the game?
It's going to be ahead of the game in that.
It is. Thank you. Sure.
The only, the only concern I have is, is that if I, again, I'm sorry, doing the per capita thing, it's flat. If I look at projected budget showed about seventy K per, per staffer. The proposed budget shows adding three. I'm averaging again.
We just don't, yeah, we don't use averages. I guess that's, might be where the math is coming in.
But it, it, to me, it, it.
Do you all have a document that we could just, because we have it line by line. I mean.
Because it seems like if all the expenses are going up, that number per person should go up if we're hiring, even if we're not hiring.
But it doesn't sound like you're hiring, you're, the, the new staff that you're adding is the top end staff. You're adding lower end staff. Am I, am I wrong?
But that won't matter.
One is, is, it's not an entry level, but it, it would be like a, a grade one, I believe.
Yeah, it's lower.
That, that's absorbed in my average calculation. So.
Yeah, actually, I think it's a grade two. But yeah.
So I'll, I'll, I'll look, I'll wait, I'll stop asking questions.
No, I, but because if we want to hit it, I just want to show it to you because I, I have to look at it to, to explain it. I apologize. But we'll have it line by line.
It's, it's complicated. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for our cause, for our animal welfare group, we are adding two FTEs. We're converting two part-time positions to full-time and adding a full-time animal care technician. And we will be conducting a facility needs assessment for thirty five thousand.
Did rabbit food fall under operating or?
It does. It actually does.
And, yeah, my, my only question on this, is that a fox?
That's what I'm thinking. I was thinking the same thing. I'm looking at that and I'm looking at the picture down here and I'm.
Fox. Ron is this fox.
It's not a rat, but cat. It's not a rat, but cat.
All right.
Does anyone ever surrender their serval cat? Big cat, giant. Not except the biggest serval.
So as we look at our Parks and Recs budget, um, we are adding.
Oh, wow.
Eight positions. So we're adding, um, a recreational superintendent. We are adding two bike managers, an aquatic specialist, recreational program coordinator as city forester, and we're adding four part-time park operations trail technicians.
Are those part-time year-round or they, are they seasonal?
Part-time year-round.
Year-round.
The, the Parks and Recs commission has been asking for an arborist, uh, staff for years.
We had one.
I mean, probably in the winter storm.
And, you know, we, we really do try to take a look at your strategic goals. As we always say, where our money is, is where our values are.
Sure.
When you told us, we took that very serious about making parks, um, what it needs to be, and to do so, I think this budget reflects it.
I think our last arborist was a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant or something.
Yeah, April Rose. The forester and the arborist is the same. Basically, the forester is an arborist that can also maintain, uh, grows the trees.
Uh, and, and was I talking, did I miss what the capital outlay increase is covering?
Go ahead.
Um, I believe we had talked about those a little bit, um, with the. Sorry. Equipment, um.
Parks equipment buildings.
John Deere bucket, a backhoe.
Playground.
Annual playground replacements.
You're doing great.
And now I'm having to get like my magnifying glass along here.
So, so that my, I guess the, the actual question I'm asking is that, um, i- is this an adjustment to what we should be spending in capital outlay and we'll see this continually year over year around this number? It won't go back down to a lower number.
So, for example, on your heavy equipment, and we will break this out in your's budget in a few weeks, um, you wouldn't be buying the backhoe every year.
Sure.
So the piece that will be repeating would be the playground replacements. Um, so I think I could allocate shade structures.
Yeah.
Those items, so, um, I don't wanna ballpark, but I'm gonna say 400,000-ish.
400,000.
Um, so you'll see that repeating. You won't see those heavy pieces of equipment, but they're, they're end of life or rotation.
And you'll see some things that we added that we believe really, uh, show that quality meets life and provides a great, um, experience. For example, there's lake improvements with ice vending machines onsite. Um, there's food truck pedestals onsite. Uh, there's a on-top water playground onsite, those types of things.
Can we pause there for a moment?
Have ROI.
This on-top water playground is amazing. So we wouldn't be buying it again every year. It'd be a one-time. But do you wanna, um, do you wanna demonstrate or tell us about that?
I'm not about to demonstrate. There's, uh, there's three or four in the state. One at Lake Grapevine. There's one in Rosheeran in the Houston area. And I believe there is one out at, on, on the west side of Austin. There's, there's one out there on the lake out there. And there, there could be a couple others from a different vendor, but basically it's an aquatic playground that sits on top of the water. Um, the way most people are running it, you can run it however you want, or you can, you could outsource it, or we could work with Tyson Texas and figure out something. But most people would, would book 90-minute segments at 15 bucks a head. And, you know, so you'd have your red bracelet from nine to 10:30 and those kids could play on this, almost like an Ninja Warrior type aquatic play structure. And you'd have a lifeguard or two out there and they would play for those 90 minutes. We'd do 30 minutes of cleanup and then we'd go straight to 11 to 12:30 and then we'd take off at one and one to 3:30 and you'd, you'd be able to get three or four flights in all summer. You know, and when you consider the bond improvements with the expansion of, um, the, the beach with Phase Two, and we're pursuing some vendors that will provide beach rentals, like, like, um, shade rentals and some cabana chairs. And then you envision ice machines out there and an on-top aquatic play structure and some of the other amenities we're already offering. It would be a, a real draw for sure, and, and all of them have ROI on it, so.
So this could be on the, on the north end of the lake or the south end of the lake?
It'd be on the north end, going towards the western side, yeah. So the beach would expand and then we would have a section roped off with buoys and the, obviously you could only get on if you had paid your, your hour and a half fee for that time.
They wouldn't let me set it on fire.
I was, I was gonna ask that next. Outside of this area, is this budget includes setting the lake on fire?
Next year, FY '24.
Sending it into space? No, no, none of that. All right, no.
I'm still gonna do it.
No, we gotta, I'm just saying.
I know.
Risto didn't, he can do it.
But I'll tell you, Shane's done a great job with the, the vision work and the, the neat things. Like you said, it, this is, we're, we're leading in that area. Um, and, and, but, but as far as a budget goes, it's not, it won't be the same thing unless we just keep adding really cool stuff every year.
I'm, yeah.
Be a neat draw. And you will get the full detail.
I like it.
The sales tax revenue from the vendors there will pay for the improvements in FY '24.
Yeah, okay.
That's what a city manager just said.
That's what you heard. That's what you heard.
That's what I heard. You know, the hearing.
So our Planning and Development Services Administration Department, and we're not adding any new headcount. Um, within your operating cost, we are including a downtown streetscape master plan, um, transit mobility plan, a fiscal analysis, um, and under capital outlay, we have new soft, um, new permitting software.
I'm sorry, there's no bunny in any of these pictures?
Uh-uh, boring.
Uh, less than that 600,000 on the software. Is that a hard number or is that a number you can, you'll have to play with in terms of bidding for that software?
I believe that Emily's team has already met with vendors to come up with an estimate.
We did.
Okay.
And planning and development also includes your transit ride-share funding. So as we look at development services, I got no, um, no additional headcount for this department. Um, your operating cost includes construction inspection, inspections, excuse me, staff augmentation. So, sorry, for planning and development, did you say ride-share funding? Yeah, transit or ride, whichever direction we go with that, meeting that community need. That's where that funding is, um, within the, uh, Planning and Development Services Administration.
Thank you.
I understand that we have some, uh, federal subsidy dollars on that, on the transit. Uh, how, are those continuing or are those gonna expire at some point?
I'm not sure. Emily, do you?
It's an annual allocation, 5307.
5307.
5307.
The feds can continue that or not?
Or not, sure.
Okay.
So as we look at the building department, and we do have, um, no additional headcount requested. Um, operating expenditures increase, um, reflects, and building inspection, staff augmentation. So we look at the engineering department, and we are adding four new, um, positions. A park project manager, an engineering manager, an assistant city engineer, and a rideaway management specialist.
I'm sorry, you said you're adding the assistant city engineer? Oh, that's right, that, nevermind. Wrong title.
It's okay. I, I knew where you were going.
So your increase in operating expenditures increase, include, um, some staff augmentation and increase, which would be reflected under professional fees, and materials testing, traffic counts, and survey services.
And what's this capital outlay?
Let me put my magnifying glass back on.
Is that some software?
For the, for the new employees or?
Let me, just like, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I mean, 19.5 seems pretty small for an engineering department, 18 people, 19 people.
It looks like we're replacing some, um, office chairs.
Yeah, it'll be furniture.
And cubicles.
Engineering's heavy furniture.
And. Hardware replacement would be out of the IT budget, right?
Software, yes. Software and the hardware for computers, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, okay.
And that is the last apartment that we have for you for the circle one.
Is 19.5 gonna be enough for the, the chairs out there for 19?
CMO isn't adding.
That seems a little low to me.
Um, the, the chairs alone aren't 19. They're less than that. That's for chairs and, and cubicles.
That seems really low to me. Maybe it's because I used to be in the chair business, but. You can get a good deal at Office Depot.
I imagine we're going through my board.
Please don't.
Some sort of cooperative, or they're buying from the library.
More likely, that's where I've seen our art funds.
All right. We got CO capacity now.
All right.
Thank you. You did a good job. Thank you for.
Thank you. That was very helpful, Nate, for doing where you're going with this.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I believe that's it, folks, and we are in dress. Thank you.